Good afternoon, good afternoon and welcome everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, 5:02 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. Before I continue, I do just want to share, we do have language interpreters available. If you do need an interpreter in a different language, we do have that capability tonight. Just let one of our staff persons know. We'll make sure that we have an interpreter for you. Si usted necesita interpretación para esta tarde, por favor déjenos saber. Tenemos interpretes disponibles para poder apoyarlos y ayudarlos en esta tarde. Solo déjenos saber, deja algún empleado saber y les podemos ayudar. So if you do need an interpreter, please let one of our staff members know. Again, we'll call our meeting to order. Thank you so much for joining us today, board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff and to any guests that we have present, both in person and online. Thank you for joining us today for our board meeting. As we do at every board meeting, I will read our board norms and protocols. Oh, that got loud, thank you. As a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for being here. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve today's regular agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, board, our first agenda item. Fortunately, we were going to have some students here with us tonight. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, they could not join us tonight, but we hope to reschedule them at a future, in the October 28th meeting. We were going to have a student group perform in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, but come back on October 28th, they will join us. Hopefully, schedules will align and we'll make that happen. But we do have in front of us, board, there is a recommendation of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Education. Recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month as submitted by Dr. Lucero and as, or Mr. Hansford, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. I'll just read what's on the memo, just so we can have it out loud. It is on the agenda for everyone to view. National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed from September 15th through October 15th to celebrate and honor the histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic and Latinx Americans, an integral part of the nation's history and identity. Throughout this month, schools have been encouraged to highlight Latinx history and incorporate related educational and cultural activities. Additionally, the Welcome Center hosted the Latinx Leadership Luncheon earlier this afternoon here at Central Office, which was a great event. I'm sure we'll hear more about that during our board commentary later this afternoon, or later this evening. So just want to, for us to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month as a, as a board. Yes, Ms. Is Dr. Estrella coming to share something? Sorry, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Estrella.
Thank you. Just a few, a few words about Latino Heritage Month. First of all, good evening, Juan Estarbis, President Lopez, Vice President Russell, members of the board, Dr. Stubblefield, and community members and staff. Each year, as was mentioned, from September 15th to October 15th, we join communities across the country in celebrating Latino Heritage Month to honor the rich and diverse history, cultures, and experiences that make up Latinx communities across the United States, and in particular, here in Kansas City, Kansas. I want to take this opportunity to uplift two ways in which our students, staff, and community partners in KC KPS are harnessing the power of community to cultivate future leaders. The first is the Hispanic Development Fund's Cambio Para Cambio. As you know, the Hispanic Development Fund is dedicated to expanding educational opportunity for Latino students in Kansas, in the Kansas City area through scholarships and community support. Cambio Para Cambio means change for change. And it is a community-led fundraising campaign that unites Latino students, families, their neighbors, local businesses, and organizations each year to raise funds for college scholarships. This campaign only provides critical financial resources, but also showcases cultural pride, leadership, and community strength. In our high schools this year, all of our high schools are participating in Cambio Para Cambio. These fundraising campaigns are student-led and provide students an opportunity to collaborate, to leverage their creativity, their innovation, and leadership towards a shared mission to expand college and post-secondary access and opportunity. The second, President Lopez already mentioned, which, just a few hours ago, we held our Latino, our Second Annual Latino Leadership Luncheon. And some of you joined us alongside about 120 students, teachers, elected officials, district staff, and community members. This is the second year, as I mentioned, of the Latino Leadership Luncheon. And just like last year, this was a truly special gathering, especially during this time when so many, so many in the Latinx community are starting to feel silenced, targeted, and powerless. Many of the panelists spoke truth to power, highlighting the many ways in which Latinos continue to shape Kansas with resilience, leadership, vision, and collective power. Students got to hear some challenges, some of the challenges and progress being made at the legislative level in Topeka, and the importance of voting and civic engagement, as well as reminding them of the opportunities available to them through Diploma Plus and the Multilingual Education Services Department. This event was co-sponsored and planned by the Department of Family and Community Engagement, Department of Organizational Development, and the Kansas Latino Community Network, and Advocates for Immigrant and Refugee Rights. I do want to take this opportunity to give special recognition to Valeria Ibarra and Dr. Lauren Hernandez for all the work that they put in to make this gathering a success. As I close, I also just want to point out the student artwork that sits in the back of the boardroom. This, this art, art display is made up of marigolds from first graders at JFK. Fourth and fifth graders created the calaveras from Lowell Broon. And then there are also calaveras up there from Wyandotte High School. So the display will be up there for a week. Please enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Estrella. Sorry for stealing your thunder if I would just pay attention to the agenda. I didn't know, and you were coming up to do all of that. So thank you, Dr. Estrella, and thank you to all of our staff and our schools who continue to celebrate. And thank you, board, for allowing the space and always embracing the diversity of all cultures within our school district. And this month in particular, for our Latino and Latinx students. I know each one of you continues to be a great champion for all of our cultures, ethnicities within the district. So thank you for participating in all the events this week, or this month. Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda. Next, we have special recognitions. I would invite Dr. Jones to the podium as we continue to celebrate some amazing accomplishments and folks in our district. Dr. Jones, good evening.
Good evening, President Lopez. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. Looking to see if we have, yeah, we do have our PowerPoint presentation. I am very honored to present to you our administrators of the month. And so we have several categories that we're recognizing for our administrators. We're going to represent someone that is from a part of the district level administrative, and then we'll look at also elementary slash early childhood, middle school, and high school. We're going to start with our elementary administrator of the month, and it is none other than Ms. Colette Chaney. Principal Chaney is the, she is the principal at Welborn Elementary School, and she was nominated by district leaders. They said it is with great enthusiasm that we nominate Principal Chaney for recognition as an outstanding elementary principal, a true leader and advocate for all students and families. Principal Chaney embodies excellence in every facet of school leadership. Her attention to detail ensures that every initiative, from instruction to culture building, is executed with precision and purpose. A strong component of whole-brain learning, she has created an environment where cognitive, emotional, and social development are seamlessly integrated into daily instruction, empowering every student to engage fully in the learning process. One of her most impactful strengths is the ability to build and lead highly effective teams. With a keen sense of vision, Principal Chaney develops yearly themes that unify staff and students around shared goals, fostering collaboration, creativity, and consistency. As a veteran educator, she brings not only wisdom and warmth to every interaction, but also a commitment to mentoring and developing future leaders in our district. Whether joyfully chiming in and singing, singing in the cafeteria or personally greeting families each morning, she sets the tone for a positive and welcoming culture, school culture. She is a tireless, tireless advocate, ensuring that every child and family feels seen, heard, and supported with an unwavering focus on students. She leads with heart, vision, and unshakable belief in the potential of every learner. She is an exemplary of every district's focus on being laser-focused every day. I recognize for you all the elementary principal of the month for October 2025, Ms. Colette Chaney. Our middle school principal of the month for October is none other than Dr. Samia Guess. Dr. Guess is the principal at Gloria Willis Middle School. She was nominated by district leaders. She exemplifies the highest standards of educational leadership through her unwavering faith, expertise, and commitment to excellence. She leads with humility, grace, and determination, consistently modeling what it means to serve with integrity and purpose. Her leadership is rooted in compassion and accountability, qualities that have strengthened the culture and success of her school community. Dr. Guess's ability to balance vision with action sets her apart as a transformational leader. She articulates a clear and inspiring direction for her school while actively working alongside staff to ensure shared goals are achieved. Her resilience in the face of challenges, coupled with her transparency and willingness to grow with every experience reinforces a culture of continuous improvement. Beyond her professional accomplishments, Dr. Guess's impact is deeply personal. She is approachable, supportive, and genuinely invested in the well-being and growth of both students and staff. Her encouragement uplifts those around her, fostering an environment which, where everyone feels valued and empowered to succeed. Dr. Guess's leadership continues to inspire excellence, faith, and hope across the school community. Her steadfast commitment to student achievement, staff development, and community partnership makes her a truly deserving recipient of the October 2025 Administrator of the Month Award. Once again, we recognize Dr. Samia Guess. Dr. Edward Franco, the principal at J.C. Harmon High School. He is our October 2025 Principal of the Month for high school. Dr. Edward Franco exemplifies exceptional leadership, commitment, and vision. Under his guidance, J.C. Harmon High School has become a place of belonging, academic rigor, and high expectations for all students. He has fostered a welcoming and inclusive environment that values collaboration among students, staff, families, and broader community. His leadership is grounded in integrity, empathy, and a relentless pursuit of excellence. He leads with humility and authenticity, earning the trust and respect of those he serves. Through his calm demeanor, resilience, and optimism, he models the qualities of a true servant leader. His student-centered approach ensures that every decision prioritizes the success and well-being of students. By empowering staff and inspiring collective action, Dr. Franco has strengthened the culture of the achievement and belonging at J.C. Harmon High School. His lasting impact extends beyond this campus, influencing the broader KC KPS community. Through his dedication and vision, makes him a truly deserving recipient of the October 2025 Administrator of the Month for the high school level, Dr. Edward Franco. And last, but certainly not least, we want to recognize Doug Clements, the Director of Physical Properties. Doug Clements exemplifies excellence in operational leadership, his dedication, expertise, and commitment to helping whenever needed in the district. He leads with integrity, teamwork, and humility, qualities that strengthen every school he supports. Always available and quick to respond in any situation, Doug consistently goes above and beyond to ensure buildings are well-maintained and ready for students and staff. Principals know that they can count on him for quick solutions, steady guidance, and dependable support. His ability to turn vision into action, paired with his calm leadership during emergencies, has earned the trust and respect of colleagues throughout the district. He embodies the qualities this recognition celebrates, making him, that's Doug Clements, a fitting and distinguished recipient of the October 2025 Administrator of the Month. Congratulations, Doug Clements.
Congratulations. We're going to take a quick picture of all of our administrators, then we'll do a board photo with each one of them as well. All right, congratulations again to all of our administrators of the month and for your continued excellence as you lead and guide our scholars in this district. Thank you for all you're doing, to your families who continue to support you as well. We know we ask a lot of you, and so thank you to your families who support you as well. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up is Item Three, Board, our community comment. Just a reminder, everyone is welcome to give comment. Just sign up the Monday at noon before the board meeting with our board clerk to make sure that you are added to the agenda. As a reminder, you'll have three minutes to speak. Once you hit about 30 seconds, 30 or 45 seconds left, I'll let you know that your time is running short. And then I will let you know at three minutes when your time is up. You, please state your name at the beginning of your comments, then your time will start as soon as you begin speaking. Make sure we have your information in case there's any follow-up that needs to happen with you after the community comment portion. And then again, just a reminder that this is a one-way interaction. With community speaking to the board, we don't interact during this time with, during community comment. So with that, first on our agenda, Ms. Louise Lynch. Would invite you to the podium. And if you need some help, if we can help her maybe with the microphone.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
If you can make sure you, there you go. That's, Ms. Smith is coming down to help you out.
I can speak really loud. I probably don't need this.
And it's for the folks online and for the recording so that they can catch you. Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Not a problem. I'm going to give it to them later. Thanks. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mrs. Lynch. I guess it's a good thing we got all the warm fuzzies over with. And thank you for attempting to acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month. I appreciate that. But what I have to say is not so warm and fuzzy. And it does make me wonder what it really means to this board to celebrate a particular culture. We have many problems right now in this school district, including the disrespect to students, to their families, to their parents. We have various levels of bullying, from kids to kids, from staff and administration to kids and to parents. That should never be acceptable. But one of the bigger things that I want to speak about is that we have students distributing drugs to other students and harming them and almost killing them. Another thing is we have students beating up other students for the mere fact they are another ethnicity and they speak another language, especially Burmese and the Spanish language. The administration and the principals have been informed, have, it has been reported, there's gone months and months with no actions. One of the families was needing assistance in helping to pay the bills that accrued from the incidents that happened in this school. And we were told, no, we need to bring it to you all, the board. But now I know we can't disclose particulars, so I won't do that. I can be contacted for that. But that is really disrespectful, especially when we know that this school board up-fronts the salary to the foundation and the foundation operates in $243,000 in the red. We know that there was an MOU that had to be redone in 2020, and there are many statutes that it does not meet. We know that the executive director, and I won't say their name, has also dipped into nepotism by hiring their child while they're already in the red, putting them further into the red, on top of the benefits that I don't think the community knows.
Thirty seconds.
Over several hundred thousands of dollars. This is despicable, and people should know who they're voting for when they vote the board, when they vote the city, when they vote our mayoral candidate, and one who's the executive director of this foundation.
We're at time, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. The board needs to be transparent to the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynch. Next, I would invite up Ms. Sarah Lynch to the podium.
This thing on? Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Lynch. Just to get out of the way, the best number to contact me at is 913-709-4850. That's for myself and the previous speaker. I'm here because this, this month is Hispanic Heritage, and I greatly appreciate the words spoken by the previous speakers at the start of this meeting. And it is also, as I found out in your halls, Anti-Bullying Month. I find these both to coincide at a very peculiar time because we currently have foreign language speakers seeming to be the prime target of the brunt of the bullying that I've heard about. The, of those, the prime targets seem to be Spanish speakers and Burmese speakers. Though if there's any other language speakers that are watching that are being bullied and targeted for being not from a primary English-speaking household, I encourage them to contact me, and I encourage you as the board to help them get in touch because I would like to advocate for them as well. There are, there are multiple forms of bullying going on, and it's not just the students, but sometimes the parents as well. And what I, I really have come here to the board to disclose is, we have gone to each level of administration, and now we are here. And my hope is that in reaching your ears, the top, that one, these students will find justice for their causes. And two, you guys will work harder to resolve these issues within the schools. And three, that all of the students and their families will be able to... able to depend on you for support in the medical bills they've received, in the psychiatric assistance they received, and whatever it is that they need to get through the traumatic experiences. Dr. Estrella mentioned earlier the hopelessness that is felt by some of our Latinos in the community at this time, and indeed across the country, and the helplessness. And I can guarantee and assure you that these students are no different than those that he spoke about, whether they're Spanish speakers or otherwise. And so I would hope that you, as the board, will look into these matters and hopefully we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. And as we share at every board meeting, a member of our leadership team will follow up with our community speakers, and information will be shared with the board on what resulted from those follow-ups. Next on our agenda, item four, is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Is there an executive, Sasha? You had it up there.
No.
I didn't know if we were doing it or what was going on.
No. Any questions on the consent agenda? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Next, on our agenda, item five, we will have our election of board vice president. Ms. Smith, if you can go ahead and pass out those ballots. Thank you. She's online.
Oh, okay.
Well, has the same question.
Has she texted?
Yolanda Clark is online, and she just sent her text, and she will be voting for Rachel Russell. Again, Yolanda Clark is voting for Rachel Russell. Rachel Russell is voting for herself. Wanda Brownlee Page is voting for herself. Randy Lopez is voting for Rachel Russell. Robert, Robert Marlin Jr. is voting for Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen is voting for Wanda Brownlee Page.
Okay. Thank you. So we have four votes for Ms. Rachel Russell, who has been elected as board vice president. Congratulations, Ms. Russell. All right, next board is our item six on the agenda, board updates and approval. We have before us, let me pull this up, sorry. This is a resolution that we need to update as a board. To approve and appoint Mr. Brad Isnard as interim executive director?
No.
No.
It's for the treasurer. Brad is coming to tell you.
Sorry, thank you. I'm trying to find the resolution within it. Thank you.
This is a pretty simple update. We are just changing two board appointments at the top of that resolution. It's just for treasurer and deputy treasurer for the district, to myself and Danita Robinson.
Perfect. Thank you for pointing, pointing that out for us, Mr. Isnard. So, board, this is a resolution to update the resolution that had been shared previously and approved. This is for item F within the resolution, to appoint Mr. Brad Isnard as treasurer and Mr. Ms. Danita Robinson as deputy treasurer. Is there a motion to do so?
So move.
Been moved. Is there a second? I will second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
So. They've already discussed their salary and what they're going to get?
Yeah, so this is, sorry, I didn't mean to butt in, Dr. So, this is not about their actual position within the district. It's the appointment for a treasurer. We had previously at the July reorg meeting, when we appointed or approved this, there was a different person's name there as treasurer, and they're no longer with the district, so we have to legally update the resolution to make sure that we have an employee of the district who's listed as treasurer. So Mr. Isnard will now be listed as treasurer, and then Ms. Robinson will be listed as the deputy treasurer. There's no additional.
So their positions, their interim positions were, was approved at previous board meetings with Mr. Isnard being the interim executive director of finance and operations and Ms. Robinson being the interim director. So that was approved previously.
I know there was, and I'm asking, not now. Can we get an update on their salary and what's the adjustment with all of that?
Yeah, it was, it was in the board agenda. I'll, I can show it to you, but it was in there.
Yeah, we can reshare that with everyone. Ms. Russell?
I apologize. I think I'm having a moment of confusion because I want to make sure we do this right the first time. I thought there were two items that we were changing on this resolution, and I can't find the initial email where it was set, the prior one, so I don't have anything to compare it. And I don't know if it changed in board docs, but both of those documents are the same within there, and I thought there were two things that were being changed. And I'm, because I don't have a comparison, I'm struggling to.
Um, I, what I see here, what was uploaded was the resolution, and the, the two things that are changing is Brad and.
Danita.
Danita. Do you recall what the other thing was?
I want to say that it has something to do with disposition, but I can't. I, hmm, can we just take a minute, so I can go to the July? Because the only other way that I would be able to see is the previous one is to go to the July 15th meeting, correct?
Take a look at.
Because I thought there was a highlighted version that had.
Thanks for bearing with us, folks, as we try to make sure that we get this correct. Are there other, while we're looking for that, are there other questions on the motion and the second on the floor? Okay. Any additional questions? Are we, was there anything else there, Ms. Russell?
Not that I'm seeing at the top of my mind, so I think we're good.
Okay. If there are no other questions, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is item number seven. We have some reports tonight, board. This evening, we will hear from a multi-studio. Would invite our friends from multi-studio forward as we hear an update on the elementary school bond project that they have for us. So, good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thanks for your patience as we got through some of our other business. Glad to have you here.
Yeah, well, thank you. We're pleased to be here, and it's good to see you all. My name is David Reed, principal with multi-studio architect and design firm. We are a new partner with KCK Public Schools, and we're quite thrilled at the opportunity. I wanted to introduce our team here as front end of this agenda. So with me tonight, going to do the majority of the presentation, is our senior project manager, Harriet Grindel, and our senior project architect, Doug Hurt, who is a 21-year resident of the Argentine community, of which we are designing this new school. Also on the team are Kelly Drier, lead architect and designer, Penny Liu, who's been actually championing a lot of the design and helping originate a lot of the ideas. Middle bottom is Dr. Michael Ralph. Michael is an educator and researcher for us and has been doing a lot of community engagement with your kids. Just finished another session yesterday and is fabulous. Got some great collateral out of that. And then finally Lance Main, who's interior designer, helping us. So with that, I'll let Harriet get you up to speed.
So we structured this to be kind of quick, open for questions at the end, but know that sometimes board meetings go a little long, so we, we tried to be pretty quick about this. Up here, you'll see our timeline. We started engaging with you back in April, developing programming and then schematic design through the summertime. At the end of the summer, we got a little bit of a change of direction in terms of the amount of students that we needed to start to consider, so we updated our schematic design, and you'll see here that we are at the beginning of design development. All targeting to complete design, be out for bid, and start construction in summer of 2026 with completion by December of 2027. So engagement during our initial programming and schematic design, this is where we love to get kind of nerdy and detail-oriented. We recognize that every student, every staff has an opinion about what is going to be happening within their community, but we also recognize that every school has specific needs, so we want to make sure we hear those. So we have different groups that we've been engaging with, the advisory committee with district leadership, school principals, district facilities, leadership staff. We had engagement with school faculty and staff, with principals, teachers, and additional staff that are in the schools. As David mentioned, students, these are where, you'll see, we've got some pictures. They're kind of small in this, but we can share those bigger. Just hearing from them and what they see as important in their existing schools, but what they want to see in their future school, and then facilities and operations. So we recognize that there are district standards that we continue to meet, but also how can we help make sure that we're addressing with the facility any concerns that you all have? On the right-hand side, you'll see the way that we've started to summarize outcomes, and that's highlighting and identifying some commonalities that we continue to hear both through the advisory committee and faculty, staff, but students. You know, I think one of the greatest things that we heard with some of the initial engagement with students was their recognition that their existing older schools are not accessible for all students, and so making sure that all students have access to the same types of, of new classrooms. So that was really exciting. And then thinking about not just what does a typical classroom look like, but what are the types of spaces that your teachers want to teach in? And teaching doesn't happen just within four walls of a classroom, so how do we consider that as we evaluate and develop that? So we've summarized outcomes on the left-hand side of this, and there were some keywords that started to come about through all of those, and a lot of them are really about the community collaboration and culture that you guys and KSCK have, and how do we use that to leverage the neighborhood and develop an ecosystem for learning? Recognizing how ecosystem became this key word for us early on because a lot of the conversations started to be about connection to nature, students wanting to have access to that, to the outside, and not just for recess, not just for outdoor play, but the opportunity to engage with the outdoors in a safe and connected space where learning can happen. So those started to tie into a lot of the things that we've seen within the district's own goals from the board with regards to staff, mental health for students and staff, as well as how does these continue to support the KCK mission of inspiring excellence with every grown-up, every child, every day? So it's a lot of words we've shown you, so you're like, I thought you were here to present to us a building and architecture, and, and we're getting there, I promise. But this initial work is really important to make sure that the spaces we're developing are supporting those goals. And so then we start to think about not just space as architecture, but organizational strategies. What are the types of spaces that staff, teachers, students are wanting? And how do we use those to create an organization of the project? And what does that mean for space? So right now, you're like, these are bubbles on a screen, we're still not to the building, and that's true, because we want to make sure we get those relationships right. How do you move from one space to another? What do you see from one space to the next?
Can you give us an example of what we're seeing?
Yeah, so on the top up here, we're looking at grade-level organization, and so each of these white bubbles is, is classroom. Blue space in this is a shared space, and so, and then in between with the orange is also some shared space, but a little less public, a little more owned. The green space is a connection to the outside, so the, the white space is the classroom organization, green space is outdoor connection, and then the orange space is shared opportunities, common space that the three classrooms or four classrooms start to have access to for additional educational instruction, but not necessarily a classroom space. So it's breakout space, it's space where they could go and have maybe messy activities that you don't want in the, in the classroom. It's, there's a sink out there, there's some additional space for instruction. And then on the bottom is, how do these grade-level organization strategies start to relate to each other and to, to the larger building? And so we explored connections to outside, connections to each other, so the red arrows are showing kind of how spaces relate visually, physically, as well as just direct adjacency. And so you'll see on the right-hand, bottom right-hand side, this idea of a courtyard became pretty prominent, and connection for all of those grade levels to have access to a safe, shared space. On the left-hand side, you'll see some post-it notes that just talk about some key things we heard about. Commons is the extension of the classrooms, collaborative activities, space for where not just classrooms of the same grade have opportunity to interact, but how can we get some interaction between multiple grade levels and making sure that those spaces are provided with supervision and maintaining limitations to distractions? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug to talk about how we turned these bubble diagrams into the architecture.
Excuse me. Explain to us why concept one and concept C are outlined in an orange dotted line.
Concept one and concept C are the organizational strategies that staff and teachers were drawn to the most, and those are the ones that started to influence how we started to lay out the building that you'll see in the following slides.
Thank you.
Can I dive in just a little bit?
Yeah.
More to that question, because I think I want to understand grade level and building-wide, and so grade level, it was not the outdoor space, but building-wide, it was the indoors or the outdoor space?
Yeah, so at a grade level, the priority became about that shared common space at the graves. They wanted those in the overall organization to have that primary learning in those shared spaces, the blue dots here, to start to have that relationship to the outdoor space. Over here, it was most important for them. Over here, it was most important for them to have access to that shared space.
So, at a grade level, level I see concept one through three. So, each group got to pick out of those two concepts?
Um, we presented them, and I will say this, that none of these concepts are exactly what made it into the building, because there were things from each of them that they were drawn to. So, concept one was a primarily, they appreciated and liked that organizational strategy, but as you pointed out, the access to the outdoor space became important, and so making sure that we incorporated that in as many ways as possible, you'll start to see in the building plan. Yep.
I promise I'm going to let you get through the presentation. But before I lose me, was there a difference between one building to the other around the concepts?
Um, we did not.
Because I want to make sure that folks know that we're talking about two different staffing and two different buildings coming together.
Yes, so we did present these both to representatives from both schools, and they came to the same consensus in those, in those meetings. And so, the, the.
By representatives, you also, that also means teachers, educators in the classroom?
There are, yeah, we have been engaging with teachers and educators in the classroom as well.
Thank you. I'm done for now.
Okay.
Thanks, Harriet. So, to orient us, our project site sits at the corner of Steel Road and Host Drive, and you can see J.C. Harmon High School is immediately to the east of our site. And we felt that this site gave us some great benefits of managing traffic, a nice site with a regular area to work with. It just gave us a lot of benefits. You can also see to the north, Silver City Elementary, where it exists today, which is, I believe, the future, future home of the new middle school that's coming. And so, we asked ourselves at the beginning, conceptually, how can we reimagine what a school feels like? And we asked your scholars and teachers and staff as well the same question. And so, we asked them to finish the sentence, "School feels like a place blank." And what we got back was a lot of the supporting engagement that Harriet mentioned earlier, that they were looking for a place of pride and identity, a place they felt like they owned, a place that was, you know, definitely for kids, so it was filled with wonder, joy, discovery, but also safety, functionality. So, all some very, very great feedback that we received from the scholars. So, taking that feedback, we asked ourselves, well, how can we, you know, conceptually, what can we do conceptually to craft a building? And so, we toyed with many ideas of how we can incorporate nature, but the thing that kept coming back was this idea of a village of treehouses. So, if you think about each grade level having their own treehouse, gives them a space that they own, they can really get excited about, and as they move from one grade level to the next, they graduate to the next treehouse, and that has great connection to the outdoor courtyard that we're going to share shortly, but feels like a real community. So, we were very excited about that idea. And then, so stepping back, just real quick, look at the site plan. So, you can see our building plan, two-bar scheme running north and south, and the two parking lots that you see are two existing parking lots. But what that gave us is a great kind of value-added proposal to utilize those, those parking spaces. We've got a separate car loop. I think that the length of that is about 1,400 lineal feet, so quite a bit of queuing space for those cars as they're doing drop-off. Of course, that's separated from the bus loop. So, we've got a pretty good management, I think, of our traffic patterns there. The main entry being right there on the east side, so it kind of faces J.C. Harmon to the east, right off of that car loop. Grass play areas, soft play, hard play, playground areas to the north. And then our floor plan, and this is a, one thing I want to make clear, this, and this will show up in the 3D views, but on the left, you see the first level. So, just the east bar is at the first level, the lower level, because our site is a fairly steep hill moving up. So, on the right, you see the second level that sits above, and then on the left side of that, that's only one-story. On the right side, it's two-story with the connecting bridge. So, to walk through our floor plan, if you look at the first level on the left, main entry, as I said earlier, is on that east side, kind of centrally located. As you walk in, of course, you're going through a secure vestibule. Administrative block is on your right. Immediately to the left is the kindergarten block of classrooms. We thought that was important to keep them as close as possible proximity to the entry as they're the youngest scholars. To the right, you see the cafeteria, kitchen, gymnasium. And then as we move upstairs, I'll talk about the bridge first. So, we've got kind of this idea, and what you see highlighted there in kind of that tan color, is where we're proposing those kind of treehouse elements occur within the plan. So, each grade level has its own commons, where all of those four classrooms spill out into that commons, that becomes a public, shared space for co-learning, co-teaching opportunities, but also a really nice playful treehouse area that those kids can really feel like they own that, they can make it their own. So, some great opportunities there, we feel we're pretty excited about. The bridge element encompasses several more treehouse elements. So, on one end, the art room. My wife's been an art teacher in Kansas for 20 years, so I'm always excited to make a nice art room. Bridge, which is a literal bridge, and we've got some 3D views, we'll show shortly. Multimedia and library bridging across from one bar to the next, and then capping, bookending that bridge at the end is the music space. And so, with that, I'll jump over. Any questions on plan before I move on?
When, when you say bridge, and I was trying to remember, what school were we at when we had the 9:30 meeting? It was kind of scary.
Oh, we were at.
Yeah.
West Park. It's, it's, it's a different concept than that. It's not that, that.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes.
If you're saying bridge, that the kids are safe, nobody can easily fall or anything like that, because we want to make sure that they're safe.
Yeah, and I've got some 3D images show that I think will help to explain that, so yeah. Okay, so, jumping in and back to the concept of this kind of feeling of treehouses within a field of trees. So, you can see on the left, it's our main entry, and that kind of first treehouse element that you can see above, that's the art room, that is the beginning of that bridge that extends to the west, but also creates a nice canopy for our main entry into the building. On the right is a view inside the courtyard. So, if you remember the plan, we kind of had two bars, and there's a green space in between. So, this is looking to the north in the courtyard, and you can see that library bridge. So, it's an enclosed space. It is a bridge that spans from the second level on the right side over to the ground level on the left, but it is an enclosed library space, so there's no outdoor falling concerns or any, anything like that. Then a couple of views inside. So, on the left, we're looking in that main entry lobby back towards that main entry up above. You see the art room, some of the nature-inspired kind of inspirational images above. Opportunities within this school to really use the school as a tool for learning, so graphics can kind of happen throughout the school that are, you know, aided in teaching, something again that I think just makes this place feel special, fun, memorable for the scholars. On the right, that is within the library bridge that we spoke of. So, again, circulation on the left, open stacks, and we're still working with this. We've got, like Harriet said, we have additional engagement coming up, talking to your multimedia staff to make sure we get those spaces functionally just right, because we know there's certainly some, some issues there. And then a view, and this is in one of the grade level commons. So, this would be, say, this is third grade, their treehouse. So, all of the classrooms spill out into this space, but then that has a nice glass connection to that courtyard in the middle. So, each of these spaces, we feel like has great opportunity. You could brand them per grade, you know, maybe by color, maybe by, you know, maybe each grade has their own mascot, a grade level themed mascot, but I think a lot of opportunity within these treehouse elements for those scholars to make them feel like they're their own, safe space and a, and a cool space that they're excited about and remember, you know, 10 years down the road. Another interior view, so on the left, this is inside the cafeteria and within that space, and this is on the east. So, if I'm looking out that window, I'm going to see J.C. Harmon in front of me. But again, trying to make that a fun place cafeteria with a treehouse element on that end. And again, great opportunities throughout the building for educational graphics to be pulled throughout the school. Up on the right, we're looking at the end of that bridge towards the music room, and one idea we've been exploring that we've heard through our engagement that some of the folks are pretty excited about is that idea that the music room could open up to that kind of open bridge area where you could have performances. It just gives a great flexibility for the activities that could occur, and that kind of a nice dual-use space, so trying to maximize what we can do in those spaces to really support the education that's going on. With that, I'll hand it back to Harriet. Any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Mylan.
Good presentation. I'm, I'm looking at a lot of wood, the concept, so my question being with is a lot of wood, so painting will be a minimum. I'm speaking about upkeep on down the line, because things do disintegrate, wear down, and, you know, get older. So, I see a lot of wood, so that's a good thing, or is paint going to be a minimum for upkeep?
So, we're not proposing utilizing actual exterior wood. There's so many great products on the market today that have a great wood look, but are made for the exterior, do not require continued maintenance, continued painting, continued sealing. So, it's a wood look.
Wood look, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Lot of great opportunities, lot of great materials on the market today that we can utilize to get that look.
Okay, so the wood, the look is wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah, can you go back to slide 14, I think, the library slide?
That one.
So, talk to me, because I must have missed it the first time you said it, but I caught it the second time. So, this is a bridge library, and tell me about where the actual library instruction takes place on a bridge like this? Because my thought, I went back to the first picture and I went back to, and I was like, I must have missed that you said that. So, I guess I'm inquiring about the instruction piece, and is the intent that there aren't people walking across the bridge during that instruction? I, I love this idea, but I, I need you to help me get there.
Yep, so, what you don't see yet, what we are working on, and we've worked on getting a schedule with your multimedia staff to inform this, is there will be an enclosed in some fashion or another for teaching in that multimedia space. Not shown here, but we are working on that. We will definitely have, you know, library office, library storage, library teaching area that is acoustically separate, and so that we don't have those distractions of circulation walking by. So, yep, that is still definitely a part of our to-do.
Thank you. And then going back one more slide to the schematic building plan that has everything.
This one?
Yes. What is that, what is that space right in front of the art place?
That is, so if you remember the view into the lobby that was looking back toward the entry, so that is an opening in the floor. As you walk through the vestibule, you'll see this nice grand stair on your left, and if you look up above, you'll see up into that second level. So, that is an opening in the floor where you have a nice stair leading up to the second level.
Like an opening with rails or?
It will absolutely have rails.
Okay, so I think that's going back to what Ms. Page mentioned was our concern, not our concern, like, it's secure, but it gives the idea that someone can jump over? And I guess I would just need to talk through that more of what that looks like from our point of view of.
Yeah.
How that maybe gives us a little bit of, because it looks good in the picture, but then when you walk in a building, it doesn't look ideal.
I think there are some, and sorry to interrupt.
You're fine.
I think there are some good solutions that we could do that maintain the aesthetics, how that looks nice.
Yeah.
While giving you added security of perhaps higher guardrails.
And I think, yes.
Perhaps it's a screen that goes.
I think that's what we talked about at, at West Park.
So that you don't, don't have students throwing things over the ledge.
If it was higher up, then.
Yeah.
A little person can't say, oh, I'm going to go for a jump. Not that that's ever happened, but.
No, it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a good comment.
So, thank you.
So, we can certainly address that. Thank you.
Yeah, so, just to wrap up here, our engagement is continuing. So, we're continuing with outreach and meeting with the advisory committee. We're also looking, as Doug talked about earlier, setting up specific user group meetings with school faculty and staff, specific to different areas, to make sure that we're narrowing it down and getting those right. As David mentioned, we are this week actually back out engaging with students again to get their opinions on some of this, and, and what does, what does connection to nature mean? What, how do we bring that into architecture? So, continuing to, to leverage the, your brilliant students within the community. Facilities and operations, security, nutrition services, additional facility staff and community, so neighborhood and school families and community, those are the next round of engagement that we're getting set up as well to make sure that we get their feedback about this building that's going to become a, a part of their, their lives daily and making sure that it is representative, representative of who they are and what they want for their neighborhood. And then design milestones on the right-hand side, just, we are in design development, issuing that towards the end of November, right around Thanksgiving. Construction documents issued in the springtime with construction starting in the summer of 2026. That's our last slide.
Thank you so much. We'll open up for questions. Ms. Brownlee Page.
I'm just going to ask it, and I'm not trying to be offensive or anything.
Yeah.
I remember when we had the first bond, and they did the brown graking ceremony, and I was a little disheartened, because I didn't see that the children saw themselves. I saw one woman, and it's nice to see you here today, and I didn't see any other groups. Now, you're saying you're engaging with the community. Is a, is it possible for people in the community to get a job in construction? We do have a lot of people. We have a school, one of their specialties, and why in that is they're teaching the kids how to work it? I'm just asking.
No, I, I hear you, and we've been talking actually with Doug, and it's on our radar. You guys have a, a great program about students and introducing them to what architecture and engineering is as an extension of construction and building. And so, you know, getting drawings as we develop those in front of them and talk about what that means for, for what that looks like, just the exposure. You don't know what you can't see, and so, I, I may not look like a lot of your students, but making sure that we're providing access to the information as an opportunity, we're working hard on that. Newkirk Novak is the construction manager. I know that they've got, they're leveraging and looking at, at opportunities for how they do that as well as we go into bidding and construction.
No, and I, and I get that, but you, it's nice if there's an opportunity, because we do have a number of parents who work construction.
Yes.
You probably already got your staff, but.
Yeah.
If you ever thought about that, giving them an opportunity, you're asking what you think, what you feel.
Right.
But what about a job? Is that a possibility? I'm just throwing it out.
No, we hear you, and I think that, you know, we're continuing to look for ways to partner with your community. I think as a, in architecture and engineering, you know, happy to have conversations about what that looks like as a pathway to a profession.
And I think, just to add to Ms. Brownlee Page, I think, and appreciate the question, our, and you mentioned it, referenced it, right? The Diploma Plus work that we have here, the real-world learning opportunities with our students to make sure that they're engaged, and opportunities for architecture, engineering, then with our construction companies and partners like Newkirk and McCown, who are helping and supporting the, the work, there may be some opportunities for engaging students and.
Yeah.
Some jobs down the road.
Newkirk Novak, I know for sure had an intern in their, their, their offices last year and are working, I think, towards that again.
Yeah.
We had Cindy Thomas in our office yesterday with a group of her middle school kids visiting STEAM Studio, which is a nonprofit organization we run within our office. So, they were there learning about the architecture and design profession. I had about 30 of them, and it's fantastic for them to be able to see what it's like. We're, we're also very committed to diversity in our organization and often run internships. We founded, helped found the Kansas City chapter of the National Organization of Minority Architects about five years ago. Tabitha was president for a while. Tabitha just finished chairing the national conference for NOMA. She and a couple of other of our architects of color are working on a new project in the Negro Leagues Baseball Museum District. But I, I hear you, like, what about your community and your kids? And so, we would love to continue conversations about meaningful engagement with them, totally.
Because that would help, I mean.
Yeah.
Paying a lot of money, and I'm not saying that has to be, but.
Yeah.
Give something back.
Yeah.
And we do have people in our community who have the skills, could they get an opportunity?
Yeah, we've worked with. Yeah, we've worked with folks at Sumner Academy and got some great kids doing a lot of design, architecture-related stuff over there, so I think there's some really good opportunity. Yeah, appreciate the question too.
And, and Ms. Page, one thing that, and I don't know what happened, like, previously when I wasn't here, but if you remember McCown-Gorton specifically, when they started their bidding process, they held it at Sumner, they worked with us to, to make sure that we were inviting local companies, local individuals to bid out those projects so they can be a part of the projects. Newkirk Novak is the construction company, but I'm sure they can replicate something like that for these projects to make sure that we are, to your point, making sure that people in the community have an opportunity to actually be employed on those projects. But I know McCown-Gorton advertised and did something, so we'll follow up on that.
I appreciate that, because I've, I've gone to some of the bidding things, and they never seem to get them, but it's a nice gesture, but can we take it beyond? Everybody can bid, but everybody doesn't get an opportunity. And sometimes some of those companies can deliver, and I realize sometimes they can't. But as much as we're paying out, why can't we help somebody here? Our parents need jobs. They need some help. We have young people who are training to do all these things, but when do they get an opportunity to do it? But I was just asking, and thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Russell, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Wen.
I just want to know, can we get a hard copy of this presentation? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure we print some copies for everyone. Did you have, I saw your hand, Ms. Russell.
I did have a question, and, um, sorry. The first comment was, did not Noma KC also participate on Central Avenue this weekend? They did a project, a community service project, and I saw that it brought folks from across the country to down, not downtown KCK, but downtown Central Avenue to work with Edgar, and so I am seeing the commitment to get engaged and to leverage those entities and organizations that you all belong to. I personally love Tabitha as a centurion, but you knew I was gonna say that. Going back to my original question beyond that thought was the conversation around, it says, "Design ends in November," essentially. I don't know if you all are following the conversation in our boundary committee around this building, also potentially depending on both the committee and the actions of this board around adding an additional staff circle into that conversation. And I know that timelines, timelines, timelines are important, and I bet you know where I'm going with this question. If there is a direction that is different than the one that we are currently taking, I just want to make sure that those staff, that principal, feel included in this process in some way without, like, completely having to go back. And I don't know if that has, if you've ever had that experience, but I also, I want to elevate that part of this is, I want folks' voices to be at the table, both the families. I wasn't able to attend last week's conversation, but I think part of the, if that is the direction this board goes, they want to support it, but they also want to know what it looks like and what it feels like, and up to this point, they have not been a part of that. And so I believe it would be of you all and of us to make sure that that is a part, if that is the direction we ultimately go.
So we did have a conversation after the meeting held at New Stanley. The New Stanley principal has been a part of the last meetings and will continue to be. It's honestly a slippery slope because, like, while, like, they were prepared to engage the New Stanley community, but it also may send the message that a decision has been made. So our last conversation where we left it is, how do we message to say if we, we want you to be a part of it in case versus not? Because we did get feedback from.
Well, I guess I wasn't implying that we should engage them before a decision is made. I don't think that's, but I'm thinking of the timeline because the construction doesn't actually go out to bid till 2026. I, I know what I'm asking of you, and I know that it's really hard to say, yes, Rachel, that's what we can do without, like, it throwing everything off. But I do, when I set out on this venture, I did say I wanted the community to be a part, and I don't want to get stuck in, you just gave us something even though we said if we did this, we wanted to be a part of it, so.
No, and I, I think I will say that it says, "Design development ends," really until we issue drawings out the door, there's some opportunity. I think we recognize that you guys are in a, a tough position, thinking about the amount of school communities that may or may not end up being a part of this. And so I think we will have, we, our doors will be open for listening, I think, and understanding where, how we, we can bring their voices in. I think that that's, not saying just the amount of change potential may, may be a little bit more limited at that time, but depending on what we hear, hopefully everybody will be, you know, aligned, but we, we do hear that and will make an effort when that decision's made to engage appropriately.
And you're responsible for FFNE, right?
Uh, so FFNE is actually been awarded to Hollison Miller for furniture procurement, but we are working with them about that, how that, that works, you know, they've done.
Is your bond project to draft the architect, but they get to pick out the FFNE in your thing? You just threw me for a loop just now.
Yeah, so there's, so I'm gonna let Doug come up and speak to how that decision got made.
Okay.
And, and talk a little bit, but yes, we, we are working with them about those special spaces within ours facility and, and what that means.
Yeah, please enlighten me.
Well, you are correct. That's exactly what we're doing, is that was awarded as part of the Hollison Miller scope of work to work with the FFNE. They, they actually won that bid in the previous bond, so they kind of have that history with us to put those things out to bid and have a, a uniform process through that, but now the expectation is, like Harriet said, they're working together with MultiStudio to work on the specific items that are envisioned for this building. But the bidding will work through Hollison Miller.
Hmm, okay.
So that was kind of my question.
Yeah.
The role of this company is to design?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next company does, Hollison Miller does what? Or whoever, what's the next stage?
Well, when we get to the FFNE's.
What is FFNE for?
I'm sorry, furniture fixtures and equipment.
Okay.
That's, that's the things that we put inside the building, the desks.
We know the definition once you say, define what the FFNE is. Okay, now move.
Okay, so, yes, when MultiStudio designs the building, they'll have ideas and thoughts about what the FFNE for that building needs to be. They will share that and collaborate with Hollison Miller as we're going out with all the bids for all the FFNE for the buildings.
Okay, so, what's the benefit of doing it this way?
It's, it's, like I said, more a matter of, of standardization, uniformity, and kind of the ease of that process.
Ain't no building got a treehouse in it, so I'm still.
I'm sorry?
Nothing. I'm gonna stop my side conversation, sorry.
Okay, we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional, I had just a couple of questions or comments. I appreciated slide eight, just, and I think the intentionality, and I forget who it was, that kind of talked about being able to see Harmon High School and the students kind of, that campus feel, I think. You've got Harmon High School, you'll have the new elementary, you'll have the new middle school right down the road. So seeing that conceptually, and I think you all building or thinking about that and talking with the other schools and staff principals about how to incorporate, like, opportunities for our littles to be able to see themselves at the high school that they're gonna be at, I think, is great, so thank you for that and for having those opportunities. I, I think, I really appreciated that. I think, I've seen it before, but I think slide eight tonight just really helped me, like, visually see how that can happen, and, and then the, the way that you've designed, I think it was Kurt talked about, like, looking out through the glass and seeing Harmon High School. I think that's a really cool, cool thing, so thank you for, for that intentionality. I, I also appreciate the continued engagement with, with staff, with community, and the thought around just safety and security. I think that's always top of mind for all of us, right? Just making sure our littles and our staff are always safe and how that's incorporated in the architecture and the build-out, or what the school's gonna look like. And being on that main street, Steel Road, I know folks are always flying down that road, so thank you for that. I think just one thing that I've heard, and I'll just share with, just that I've heard, as you think about those open concept spaces or those shared spaces, like, how do we make the best use of those spaces? I know that's been a conversation the board's had, and some staff have had with other school buildings that have created this, like, cool open space, but then it never gets used. And so I think in your conversations with the staff and the teachers and the principals, you're probably getting a lot of information and ideas on how best to do that, but I just wanted to bring that forward because I know that's something that this board has brought up, is, like, if we're building these cool open spaces or shared spaces, the treehouse idea and, like, having their own space, like, that's, being intentional about how we use those spaces, spaces for learning, for creativity, for fun, and that they actually get used. So I appreciated kind of seeing that laid out in here as well. So just some comments, I'm looking forward to seeing how this continues to be played out in the next iteration for this, so thank you for sharing. Ms. Brownlee Page.
Maybe I missed it. Is there an auditorium, or is the cafeteria like the auditorium?
In your elementary schools, you don't have a dedicated auditorium space, so as we talked about, presentation space can happen in the cafeteria, or smaller presentations can happen in the space outside the music room.
Okay, well, I know you're saying that, but no one said we'd like an auditorium? Does it fit within the budget to offer that?
You would give up something else. Like, so the square footage is how the budget is driven, so in that square footage, if you wanted an auditorium, you're either giving, you're giving up something else. They, there are lots of things that were discussed, and then once they, it came down to it, that's where it landed, but you would be giving up something else to have an auditorium within budget.
Well, if this multi-room is what you do, is there a stage? I don't remember seeing that. So is it in there? If it's gonna all be played back in the cafeteria, is there a stage? I've seen that in some cafeterias.
Yeah, so there were two spaces. There was the cafeteria, and then there was the presentation space, and in one of them, they did have like a, a what would be considered a stage area. I can't remember if it was elevated or not. They're nodding.
Yeah, so we've got, in the cafeteria, there's what we've identified as the treehouse on the end, and that would be an opportunity to bring in a portable stage. There wouldn't necessarily be a built stage that was permanent in order to leverage the best use of this on a regular basis and making sure that the spaces is serving the needs of the students daily first, and then when those opportunities come for a presentation and the need of a stage, a, a piece of, of temporary stage furniture could come, come in and serve that purpose.
About an outdoor amphitheater, mini amphitheater, looking, I'm just throwing out ideas. I'm sorry, I'll stop.
So I will say that outside, we do have the hill in between, and leveraging that as a way for, you know, kind of impromptu, casual presentation.
Sorry, I just, you know, just start thinking. Ms. Russell.
I'm going back to Mrs. Page's concern, because, can you go back to one more? Where the schematic design is? Where's the gym?
So the gym is up here, on the north end, and then the cafeteria, your kitchen here, so.
Oh, so that's not where that music room is?
So the music room is, is upstairs at the end of the bridge, and there's.
Because I thought I read it as the music room opens up to the cafeteria.
No.
Go back one most, go back to the one you was just at.
Yeah, so the music room up.
Cafeteria and Music Room, and it says, "Wall Open Performance."
Yeah, so this is just Cafeteria and Music Room are the two images below. The image on the left is the cafeteria, the two images on the right are the music room upstairs, upstairs. On the upper portion is when the wall is closed. That would be the classroom, and there would be a breakout space. That wall could open and furniture could be brought in for a small presentation in that area.
And this is why questions are important.
Yes.
And so I'm gonna go back to her caveat. We, as a district, while the district norm is not, that is one of the number-one complaints I've heard in the survey. So when we went, when Hollison Miller did their survey, people wanted to get rid of the caffeum, whatever you want to call it, because they said it's not conducive, because you can't set up for anything until after lunch is done. And so I'm going back to this, and I, and maybe that's the question that you take back to them, because I have concerns about that. Because on the one end, we heard from students and we heard from staff that those caffeums don't work well for programming, but I'm trying to figure out the gym space and also all of those things.
Yes.
So, maybe I need to look at your data, but.
We'll continue that conversation. I, I think what we've heard now is the cafeteria and gym are in this, and it was very important that those two programs be separated.
They're separate.
So that gym and cafeteria were, but I, I hear what you're saying about that.
But then when you have families come and there's nowhere for them to sit, because like at Frank Rushton, we have the cafeteria and we have the gym right next to each other. You open the wall and it creates a bigger space. So I guess that's different than what you're showing here, because these are completely two separate things.
That's correct.
So, okay, thank you.
And I, I do just want to clarify, when the, all of that can be done, it all is at a cost, so if those, if that is the feedback and the adjustments, or if that is the direction you go, you lose other space unless you are adding money to add those additional spaces. So you gotta give up something to gain that, and that's where.
I'm gonna shoot for the moon, because it's gonna be cheaper to do it now than to try to figure it out later, so if you want to give me the data on how much it costs to add another, we got the land, so I guess right now it's, the question is, how much is that additional space gonna cost? So, give me the number, and then we can have a conversation about whether or not we can do it or we can't.
No, I, I get that. You're right, we only have X amount of dollars. Now, if the people are complaining now about the dollars we asked for, that takes a lot of gall to come back and ask for some more.
So, I'm not saying we asked for more money, I'm saying that we also.
I don't know where you're gonna get the money from.
These are, there are different budgets. That's like what a capital outlay budget is for, it's completely separate than the actual running of a school building, so.
That's nice, but you'll see.
How is it, I am seeing.
Yeah, I know.
So, thank you. Any additional questions for MultiStudio? I'm sorry, Ms. Brownlee Page.
It is handicap accessible, right? And is there an elevator or so? Okay, gotcha. Is it more than one or just one?
One elevator, right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, board, next, on our agenda, still on item seven, would invite Dr. Laurie to the podium. We'll get our first quarter sped report, or, good evening, Dr. Laurie.
Good evening. Pull this up. Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Russell, board members, Dr. Stubblefield, and all stakeholders present today. My name is Dr. Jakita Laurie. I serve as the Executive Director of the Wyandotte Comprehensive Special Education Cooperative, and I am honored today to share our quarter one progress update on the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Special Education 2025-2028 Action Plan, our roadmap for enhancing the way we serve students, families, staff across areas in special education. All of our work is rooted in our sped mission of Kids First and our vision of empowering all students with exceptionalities to reap their full potential, not only in school, but also in the community. Our special education priorities are focused on the continuous improvement for instruction, compliance, staffing, and accountability. This year, our theme is "The Sped Experience." It reflects our commitment to ensuring that every interaction with our department, whether a student, a family member, a colleague, leaves people feeling valued, supported, and heard. This theme also aligns with our district's focus of better every day and laser-focused. And together, they remind us that excellence isn't achieved through one, through. And together, they remind us that excellence isn't achieved through one, through big leaps, but through consistent and intentional moments experienced by experience. Our sped action plan includes four goals. In this evening, I will be sharing updates on each of those. Our first goal here, um, centers on building a shared vision and strengthening communication. And communication and visibility remains our top priorities. This quarter, our leadership team, including myself, Dana Nelson, Erica Brown, and Ms. Doritah Henry, completed 41 school visits across the district. These visits are focused on listening and not just checking in. We're hearing directly from teachers, paraprofessionals, and principals about the work, um, what's working well, and the areas, um, that need attention still. Meeting face to face with staff to discuss successes, challenges, and needs have been incredible valuable, um, incredibly valuable this, uh, first quarter. To further enhance our department's communications, we have expanded our updates to principals through our administrative office and now contribute regularly to the superintendent's end of the week report, ensuring consistent and transparent communications across all levels. Our second focus area is collaboration and culture. It's really the heartbeat of the special education experience. This quarter, we launched our first sped roundtable of the 25-26 school year, which includes 12 staff, um, representing various levels and roles across the district, including special education teachers, paraprofessionals, school psychs. And this group reflects perspectives from both our virtual and in-person staff. And we collaborate and we will collaborate with, um, Dana and myself through subcommittee focused, um, professional development, onboarding, retention, and specialized programs this school year. We also convened our first sped advisory group meeting for the 25-26 school year. This is a diverse team that includes parents, staff, a board member, Yolanda Clark, and representatives from Human Resources, Curriculum, and Diploma Plus. Together, we, um, explored ways to strengthen advocacy, communication, and family engagement across our schools. In addition to this, um, I kicked off my staff and parent huddles this quarter, and I have issued three special education newsletters to all sped staff to keep them informed and connected. Our third area of our plan focuses on clarity and consistency. This quarter, we released updated versions of both our case managers handbook and our paraprofessional, paraprofessional handbook. These resources clearly outline the roles and responsibilities and the lines of support for the different staff, making it easier for staff to understand not just what they do, but who they can rely on for guidance. We also refined processes for our virtual case managers to ensure equity and consistency across every building. Um, this is where the phrase of laser focused truly applies, because clarity is what builds confidence. We also recognize that this is an ongoing process, and we continue to incorporate feedback from staff to strengthen these systems. And when everyone understands their roles and responsibilities, collaboration improves and ultimately our students benefit the most. Our fourth focus is on people, recruiting, retaining, and developing exceptional staff. Last spring, we shifted the hiring process for special education teachers and paraprofessionals to building leaders. My team and I remain available to support and assist as needed throughout this process. During quarter one, we've welcomed new sped teachers, related service providers, and paraprofessionals. And we continue our active efforts to recruit additional staff. And despite ongoing national challenges in special education staffing, our district continues to lead the way in ensuring students can receive the services they need. When we encounter barriers in which we do, we collaborate, problem solve, and leverage available resources to remain compliant and provide quality support. We also listen to the feedback from our sped staff, who expressed interest in a different way to start this school year, this quarter. Instead of our traditional kickoff at the memorial hall, this year, we launched our special ed experience in partnership with the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. This event featured a workshop style sessions led by our vendors that we contract with. And there was no additional charge for any travel, for their time here, or anything that they did for us. That was something that we recommended and told them, we have to have this as a partnership, um, since we work together for staffing. In total, we've, um, offered 25 hours of professional development. Um, and it included instruction, um, around qualities, uh, compliance training, instructional sessions, and intentional connections for paraprofessionals on Wednesdays. I just wanted to add this slide, because this is just a reminder to all of our stakeholders about our special education instructional hub. This is a 24/7 digital platform that provides staff, families, and partners with access to our instructional tools, forums, and compliance resources. This hub is already being used daily across schools and represents another step towards improving access, efficiency, and alignment across the department. This is a perfect example of being better every day and having that mindset. Um, it's small, consistent systems that make the big difference in the day-to-day work of our staff. So our commitment remains the same. As we look ahead to quarter two, our focus remains on building momentum. Ultimately, the sped experience is about shared accountability. Every adult who interacts with a student or a family should strive to make that experience the best one they've ever had. We are proud of the progress made this quarter, and we remain laser focused on what's next. Together, we are building a stronger future for special education, one interaction at a time. So this sped experience belongs to all of us, and I am grateful for your continued support and partnership throughout this journey. At this time, I'll take any questions and feedback for our quarter one update.
Thank you, Dr. Laurie. Would open the floor up for any questions from the board. Ms. Brownlee Page.
It's a comment. I know universally, there's a problem retaining teachers regular ed or sped.
Yeah.
So what are you guys doing to create? I know you're going through the agencies. You have to. You have no other choice. But to create our own teachers, do we have pairs who might be interested that we could train or get them what they need to do?
Absolutely. We have partnered with our Human Resources Department through our L, our license, it used to be parroted teacher program. It's called LRL now. Um, and we have continued every year to move paraprofessionals to special education teachers. We currently have a few teachers now teaching in our schools that was just in a paraprofessional position. And some of those paraprofessionals were agency pairs before they became a district hire and now a special education teacher. So we are continuing to grow our own through our, um, our parroted teacher program, and we also grow our own through our waiver program. So teachers that are already gen ed teachers who are very interested in becoming a special education teacher, we partner together to see, um, to get their licensure appropriate and, and continue to work with them to be sped teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Laurie. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, and sorry, I didn't send these ahead of time. If there's not an answer, definitely you can share, um, later. Apologies for not sending sooner. Um, a clarification for me, in the presentation, um, there was a statement around or a comment around, um, uh, I'm trying to find it exactly, hiring sped pairs teachers happening at the building level. Um, but in email that we, that the board received earlier this year, that, that was different than, than what we were told. So just wanna make sure that I'm clear on where, where that actually happens or, and so we're all consistent on like how that actually happens.
Sure. Thank you for that question. So when I shared today that recruiting and hiring sped teachers and paraprofessionals transitioned to the school building in the spring, that means that they are the ones that are out there recruiting, they're interviewing, and recommending to hire. That is something that they weren't doing for the first three years. And so we've transitioned that back to them. But then the difference is the posting of positions. So the posting of positions are still in a staffed type of pool position, position postings on our district website, unless it's a specialized program and that those particular programs are only in certain buildings throughout the district. Those are the programs or the schools that have their names associated with it. Um, so I think that's where there might've been a disconnect with the email that you're referencing versus what I'm stating today. So the difference between hiring and, um, placing staff versus how it's posted on our district website.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then it's a follow-up, just since we're talking about staffing, um, do we have any, or number of virtual, um, staff that within our sped department that we're working with? Are we fully staffed with people, like in the buildings, or do we have some, still some virtual support?
Yeah, we still will have virtual support. The virtual support that is coming from our special education department is around case management. Those are the virtual staff that we have. And then we have virtual school psychs where they, um, they, uh, do the cognitive assessments and things of that sort. But when our students need tested around academics, there is an in-person person that comes to the school and evaluates them. And so yes, we are not fully staffed. I believe in the HR report recently, we were about 78, 79% staff, including our agency staff. Um, but that's currently where we are. And we will continue to recruit and fill those positions. Um, but of course, this time of the year is very challenging. And as we need staff, because one thing about special education, we, we have to find staff. So if we have to use agencies, if we have to, to do what we gotta do, we have to, to stay compliant.
And how many of those are virtual caseworkers?
The virtual case managers?
Percentage, yeah.
I don't have the exact number.
And that's okay. I didn't send sooner.
But I can, I can give that to you. So you wanna know what again?
That, the number of like the virtual versus.
The virtual case managers?
Correct.
Because we don't, we don't have virtual, the only virtual teachers we have are the virtual teachers that support Green Bush Virtual Learning.
Perfect. Yes. Then the caseworkers.
And then the virtual case manager. Okay.
Um, and then I, I guess just an overall, and I, I apologize because I missed the meeting back in June when you presented. And, um, so I went back and watched that. Um, I guess I, I just, I wanna make sure, and I appreciate you talking about the sped experience, because I think that's something that, um, we heard that there were positives and challenges last year. And thank you for the work, because I know you, it's been a heavy lift that you've have, had to take on and bring us to where we're at now. Um, and it is slow and it is incremental at times. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I just wanna lift up though, um, that sped experience. Like I, I, I appreciate you, you all focusing on that, because I think, and it's not just sped, it's in all of our departments and as a district, I want, I, I agree, I want our families, our scholars, our staff for their experience when they interact with any of us to be that of professional and, um, that of like where people feel heard and valued. Um, and so particularly in sped, where, which we've had some challenges. And I think that's why we're continuing these conversations more frequently. Um, and I wanna lean into this a bit more, just because I know I've, people have reached out to me specifically on, on challenges and, and things. And so I, I, I just wanna make sure that we continue to work and support our scholars and our families and how they're heard and how they're valued and our staff and how they're, um, the interactions that we have. And I know that's something we need to continue to do, do district-wide.
Yes.
But just how we, how we lean in, lean into that experience for our principals, for our students and the families and the parents, guardians, um, and what their experience is, because there, there's already a lot of challenges around having a student with an IUP or any, any kind of, you know, extra support that need to, needs to be provided. And so how do we make sure that we're doing everything we can in an empathetic way, um, and with our staff as well? So I appreciate you lifting that up, that that sped experience is something that we need to highlight. I mean, I think that was called out in the KU, um, what was it called? The K.
Environmental.
Environmental scan and the recommendations and kind of that, um, the independent oversight and the increased communication. So I, I think the next time around, one, one piece that I would love to hear a bit more is just those outcomes, those, um, like how are we, like actually the metrics that we're tracking around how we're doing that? Um, and maybe even as you all have gone into schools, you've been into 41 schools this first quarter, like what are some of those things that you're hearing, both the positives, but also still the challenges, right? And then how do we measure the progress, whether it's incremental or giant leaps that we're taking in those student outcomes and progress for, um, that have been recommended by the KU work group? So appreciate that, um, ahead of time, because I think that'll be helpful for us as we're learning more about how we're working with our families.
So what are you asking again, President Lopez, for me to bring next time?
So I think that this time around, there was a lot of, hey, we've done this in this first quarter. We focused on getting out into the buildings and talking with folks. Um, I think how do we start measuring that? What are the metrics that we're looking at for like student outcomes and for some of the things that KU recommended that we start tracking? Um, what are we actually doing? And then what are those things that we're tracking to make sure that we're progressing through those K, that environmental scan from KU that they said, hey, these are some of the things that we're recommending that you all start doing. And I, I know like the newsletters you're doing and some of the other communications and things, but some of the outcomes that, and metrics that they've recommended from that scan, um, for us just to bring back some, some of those outcomes.
I will take a look at that to see more specifically of what you're asking and what metrics that they outlined in that document. I'll be happy to bring that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Um, I just have a follow-up to that. I think, uh, and I was gonna go find the link where we in August updated it. Had, has the website been updated from that quarterly update or that's a part of this quarter one?
So this is after.
And I apologize, I stepped out.
No, that's okay. Um, after I, what I presented today, we'll then go to the website to be updated for quarter one.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then I didn't submit this question before, and so I'm happy to send it in a follow-up, but do want to publicly ask it. Um, there was concerns or questions around the group that was created last year. Um, and then that group is now back together, but the folks are different within the group. And many of the concerns were around the length of time that some of the folks within that group had been a part of the, um, previous group and then how they got selected. And so I guess if we could just follow up on the conversation and just being transparent about how that, I understand hearing from different voices, but I also understand that people also wanna see continuity and being able to be a voice. And there was some conversation about what the group should have done differently in the midpoint last year. And so I can follow up in the email. And I think Mr. Lopez, if you would follow up in a le, email as well so that we can all as an entire board get the responses, um, that would be greatly appreciated. So.
If you can send those questions to me, so Don can put it in the shared document, then we can send it to the full board, so that it's not multiple emails going back and forth. That would be great.
Do additional questions or comments? All right. Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Brownlee Page.
We know we don't have enough staff. So how is the state, because I know you have to do certain things. When they don't fall into play, we get dinged or whatever. Are they trying to help us or it's just our responsibility to make it work?
No, I believe the state has been very supportive and, um, they are, um, approving many universities and colleges to offer programs, shorter programs to allow staff to, or not just our staff, but to allow, allow anyone who wants to go into special education to get into those programs and meet the minimum requirements and get them to, to districts so that they can work. So I do believe the state is doing the best that they can under their circum, their situation to support districts. And, um, I have nothing, um, I have nothing but praise for how the, the state has really supported me.
Thank you.
There's no additional questions. The co-op, Piper left this past year, right?
Yes.
So right now, it's just the two that you, so it's us and Bonner Edwardsville?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brownlee Page.
I don't have another question.
Okay.
Can we take a restroom break?
Yes, I was gonna do that after we were done here. Thank you, Dr. Laurie, for your information. Appreciate you.
Good night. I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Clark.
Uh, Dr. Laurie, if you don't mind, can, if anyone were listening and they wanted to know when our next listening advisory meeting was taking place, do you have that date in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can get that out.
If you can send it to me, then.
I can send it to you.
Even in my comments, I can say it. Thank you. I think that's important to call out.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay. Uh, board, let's take a quick 10-minute recess and we will reconvene at 6:50. Okay, Board, let's take a quick 10-minute recess, and we will reconvene at 6:58. Thank you. All right. Thank you for giving us a quick moment. We'll keep, continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda, we have a third presentation tonight on the Neighborhood Revitalization Act. Good evening, and I apologize that I didn't catch your name ahead of time.
My name is Judd Knapp, is my name.
Good evening, thank you for joining us.
All right, I'm here tonight representing the Unified Government Economic Development Department to get a renewal of the NRA program. This program needs to be renewed every five years, and it expires at the end of this year. I'm here to get, to present you the changes that we've come up with, with the program, and then get an inner local agreement signed between the UG and the school district to perform this tax rebate. All right, first I'm gonna go into what is the tax rebate? It is a property tax rebate that encourages investment and revitalization and new construction. I'll give you a little example. If somebody wants to rehab their home, they first have to apply for the NRA program. It's not every rehab gets this, you'd have to apply for, for the program to get it. You invest money in your home, and the amount that your home increases in value is the amount of the rebate that is given back to you. So we're incentivizing people to invest in, in the community and their neighborhoods. The program's been around since 1999. It's used for residential and commercial buildings, and approval is needed from all taxing jurisdictions in the county, and that's why I'm here tonight. Some benefits of the program, we have long-term revenue growth. Without the NRA, homes are not incentivized to be built or maintained, so many lots stay vacant. With the NRA, the lots are, are developed. And then once the rebate period ends, schools receive the property tax from a higher value property. We're going to stabilize the tax base, we encourage investment in the neighborhoods, reduce blight and vacancies, and no loss of existing revenue. I wanna focus on that word "existing" part, because that is the, the schools keep collecting the base amount. So this is how the program works. We're gonna start at the bottom with the base value. This is the value of the property before any improvements are made. This is what they already pay taxes on. This is the amount that you will keep receiving during, during the rebate period. The increment amount is the amount of value your home increased because of the rehab or new construction. This is the part that is rebated back to the person. And then future appreciation, so if the value of the home increases after year one, those are not tax, those are not a tax rebate eligible. Give you a little real-world example of this. This is a 95% tax rebate for a residential rehab. The home value before the rehab was $90,000, so that's our base. That's the amount that you're going to receive taxes on for the next five, five years in this location. After the rehab, the home went to $170,000. So you take that 170 minus the 90, and you get the increment value, how much that house increased in value because of that rehab was $80,000. Then we take 95% of that $80,000 and rebate it back to the homeowner. So in 2022, the rebate amount for this house, they got a $1,500 check back. They paid $1,600. So that $1,600 part, I know the school district doesn't get all that $1,600, but you would still get that base, base amount. Now here's the real changes to, to the map. We have different areas. Area one's boundaries got reduced. It used to go all the way down to KU Med. We brought that to the river north. That area is a 95% rebate for residential rehab. It's, we're reducing the, no, wrong, I said that wrong. It's a 95% rebate for new construction also, and that is a 10-year rebate in that area. Area two, we're keeping the rehab to be at 95%, and we are reducing the incentive for area two for new construction is gonna be 50%. And that 50% only lasts for five years instead of 10 from area one. That was a very short presentation about it. I have a longer one back behind it if I have any more questions, but that's, that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. And Board, the, I think the longer presentation is available for you on the agenda, so you have access to it on screen. Dr. Winn?
Thank you. Go back to slide four, and explain your future appreciation, where you said, if the property increases after one year, the amount is not rebated.
Yes, so when the property owner rebates their home, remodels their home, sorry, that initial value increase is rebated for five or 10 years. But if the house goes up in value the next year and increases in value, that part is not rebated. So we're just rebating the amount the home increased because of the rehab that was done.
Okay, so I get that, but then this says, if the property increases, the amount is not rebated.
So.
I'm confused.
Let's, let's go. Year zero is the rehab year.
Okay.
All right, so that's the one your rebates applied to, and if your home increases the value in the next year, that new value is not rebated. Like, for instance, if it was the other way around where your taxes would be exactly the same for five years. Because if your home is increasing in value, your taxes won't, I'm wrong.
Yeah, because our, it, the trend is always upward each year.
Yes, that is correct. So it's just the value that your home increased because of the rehab is rebated only.
Okay, and that's only, and that's for five years, five years?
Area one.
In those areas, right.
Is 10 years.
Right.
And area two is five.
Five years, okay. And how do you, how do you, the process in presenting the amount of rehab with the application?
That is based on the appraiser. So the application, you have to have it in before you start your rehab.
Okay.
And the appraiser goes out to your house and appraises your house. And then you tell the appraiser when you're done with your rehabs, and they come back to your house and reappraise it. And that's how they get that increment amount of how much your home increased in value.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, additional questions, Mr. Knapp? I do have a technical question, and I don't know if it's a Mr. Goheen question or for Mr. Knapp. You said you, the UG is asking for taxing entities to approve these changes, is that right?
Yes, that is correct, because we are giving, you're rebating your tax revenue.
Okay, so you need this body to formally approve the changes. What is the timeline to make that? Does that need to happen soon or can it? Typical, and the reason I ask, typically the board has presented information once, takes some time to digest, and we'll bring it back for approval at the next board meeting, which would be October 28th. But I don't know if you all had a specific timeline, and I just wanna check with Mr. Goheen to make sure that that's correct with our process and what we formally need to do to approve.
Yeah, that, that would be our normal process, to have an action on it at the next board meeting, but is there a deadline that you're operating under?
There, it does expire at the end of the year. We've had conversations at, at the UG that it's okay if we let it lapse until like February or March.
Oh, so we have, okay.
Yeah.
We can, okay. I just wanted to make sure you didn't need it like tomorrow.
No.
So that gives us time to then come back and do a formal approval for that at, at our next board meeting. I just, thank you, that helps, thank you. Brownlee Page?
Is that in writing, the February and March? You said it, but is it in writing somewhere that we have until February or March to do it?
That was this conversations we've had internally at, at the UG, that's, that's not in writing?
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Knapp? Okay, I would just ask, I don't know if there's a formal like agreement or something that, that we need to review. If there is, if you wouldn't mind, and I'll have our board clerk follow up with you if there's a formal approval or something that you need a signature on, if you can make sure we have that, so that when and if and when it's approved, we can take care of everything for you.
You will have it very soon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knapp. Thanks for hanging in there tonight. Thanks for hanging in there tonight for, after all the presentations.
Is it possible to get that in writing, that last part, what you said? That they conversated about it, but what's the official deadline?
I believe we don't have an official deadline. We were just...
Okay.
So, well, I think it lapses, it expires at the end of the calendar year.
It does.
So, yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Thanks for being with us. Okay, we will continue on with our agenda. Next on our agenda, oh, item eight is under board discussion. Board, we need to appoint a voting delegate for our school district for the upcoming KESB delegation. Last year, I think it was Dr. Nguyen, and then we, it was Ms. Drew. Didn't ask ahead of time, is there anyone who would like to be volunteered to be appointed as the voting delegate? If not, I'm happy to. I'm planning to attend KESB this year, but I wasn't sure if anyone else wanted to volunteer or be appointed. If not...
It's you.
It sounds like it. If not, is there a motion to appoint me, Randy Lopez, as voting delegate? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Further discussion, can I say nay? No. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes. And to answer your question, yes, you can say nay, but it sounds like you're outvoted.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. All right, we'll make sure we get that into KESB so that they have that, Ms. Smith. Thank you. Next agenda item is something new on our agenda, board policy. I feel like we haven't done these in a while, so Greg, we might need a refresher on some of these. No, I'm kidding. So first, and we can go through there several board policies that are third read or second read, first read. So, Mr. Goheen, I'll pass this on to you to walk us through these.
So the, the first two policies that are on here are acceptance for third read, which is policy DFH and policy ICA. This is really a housekeeping item more than anything else. These were adopted for first and second read last spring, and for some reason, they, they fell off the third read when we did the third read in the spring, so they just need to be adopted. They're just not in the policy book right now. So those are cleanup. These were, the one is for pilot projects that are operated by the, the district, and the other is for fundraising activities, and both of them are, were recommended by KESB last spring.
There are motions to accept for third read, policy DFH and ICA?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion on either of these? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
The next grouping, so to speak, are the ones that were approved for second read at the last board retreat, and this includes policy GARH, which is the modifications to the attendance, absence of leave and vacation policies, mostly reflecting changes to bereavement pay and the designation of what we've previously called disability leave or sick leave, to designate that as health leave. And then, the other remaining ones on here for second read are modifications based upon KESB's recommendations relating to non-resident enrollment and military students. So those would be policies GARH, policy JBCC, and policy JBCD, and we'd recommend those for second read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Russell.
It's not really a question, it's a statement that I would like noted, that we discussed also the policies that were not coming forward, to still have those be presented, and so making note to circle back to those recommended, but that the board are not following up with. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'll get you that. I apologize, I should have had it included in the back of this month.
I don't know what you call it in the agenda, if we're not, but maybe it's just like KSB, no recommendation, I don't know, but...
I could, I could just do it as a list with the actual proposed changes from KSB, just as an informational item.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Been moved and seconded. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
The next three items are up for first read. I don't know if you want to take them individually or not, I'll go ahead and tell you what they are. These are the acceptable, amendment to the acceptable use policy to address device loss language. The next one is for the student voice policy, and the third one is for board community engagement. So those are, those are all up for first read, those proposed changes tonight. So we can take them one at a time, or all at once, however you guys want to do that.
Would have a preference on, there's no preference, we can take them all at once? There's a motion to approve policy AUP, student voice, and BCE for first read?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion on any of these policies? Hearing none. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Okay, next, Board, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay, good evening. I have a few announcements, I actually need to pull them up. I did, for this, I'm going to start, and I think it may be attached, if not, we'll get it attached to the agenda. Something we're doing different this year, or at least I'm doing, as I try to get better every day, is to highlight a few things at the end of each quarter. The quarter did end last week, and our students will have Family Advocacy Days next week, but just a few things to highlight as we continue to reflect on several areas where we can improve, but also highlighting where we are making improvement. So regarding attendance, 27% of our students currently have perfect attendance, 58% have missed fewer than 5% of the attendance days, and 96% of our elementary buildings had 92% or better attendant, attendance averages, and 100% of our middle schools had greater than a 90% average attendance rate.
That's good, that's good.
It is really good, and it's something that we are hoping that we can continue to do for the remainder of the year. Regarding discipline, the use of restorative practices has increased in a number of our schools as a percentage of resolutions. 138 restorative justice resolution circles or rooms have been used in the first quarter compared to 96 during the first quarter last year. So this use of all, an alternative to suspension and helping to make sure that our students are actually here, our staff is really starting to utilize that. Also, regarding HR, not just HR, but our fill rate for subs has been at 80%. That is something that we're working to continue to improve by continuing to recruit subs. This week is nutritional service, National School Lunch Week. I did serve lunch yesterday at Central Middle School to sixth graders, and really enjoyed the time with the staff and the students. I was invited, if people are wondering how Central got picked, I was walking through, and the manager was like, would you come back and serve lunch during National School Lunch Week? And I said, sure, and so I made it back over to serve lunch. I've been invited back to run medals, metal detectors by their SSA, so I'm going to have to learn how to do that, but I told her I would come back. But in the first quarter, Nutritional Service served over 4,000 breakfasts, 665,000 lunches, and nearly 25,000 suppers. The district was nationally recognized and locally praised for its diverse menus. We will be featured on My KC Live during National School Lunch Week this Friday, so they're featuring us for our diversity of our lunch. Our TIS department has closed nearly 5,000 tech support tickets, and 95% of all tickets submitted in the first quarter. Transportation has transported 12,695 students, and they have, that have used our district transportation's or resources to get to and from school. And after one year of iReady Classroom mathematics implementation, more students are starting to school year-ready for grade-level math skills compared to last year. We'll give more specific data around that when we do our academic report. And there's an additional slide that talks about our number of internships, client-connected projects and such, but I do want to say, just in first quarter, we, our students are already, have earned over $321,000 in scholarships, and that's not including two of our schools, and we'll continue to tabulate that. But I just wanted to share the first quarter by the numbers, and as we continue to have this conversation, we'll do a better job of sharing this information publicly. One last reminder, this Saturday is the Marching Band Festival at Wyandotte High School. I think it starts at 2:00. I have to get the right, 3:00. 2:00 if you want to see, they're starting at 3:00 on time, so hopefully you can come out and support them in the Marching Band Festival. Thank you.
Dr. Stubblefield, you gave us the numbers. Is there any way to get information, what worked? I mean, how did we get the attendance?
Yes.
Where it is? What happened?
Yes, so we'll give that in our academic update and also at the academic committee. I just was sharing the numbers, but yes, we'll get you that information. Yeah.
On all of it? I mean, what's working?
Yes.
What's not? How do we get it better?
Yes, we'll get it to you. And if you want the numbers for reference, it's in the, on the agenda. I actually attached the PowerPoint with the information. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you.
It'll be on the 28th.
Thank you.
Academic meeting, 28th.
The academic committee meeting, meeting, October 28th. What time?
10:00.
What time?
10:00.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
The first academic committee meeting is 10:00 on, 10:00 AM.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a couple of things on my end. I do just want to again, give a shout out to everyone that was involved, both from the school district, the Welcome Center, all of our partners who helped put together today's Latino luncheon, over 125 students who were present, board members who were present, staff. Dr. Stubblefield gave some remarks, our elected officials that were there. Thank you for all the work. It was so great, such great energy, good music, good food, good people, great conversation about uplifting our students and how they can continue to show up and, and, and bring hope to, to our community. So thank you to everyone who helped organize today's event. Thank you to everyone who continues to lift up the diversity within our school district. It was a great event today, and thank you, board members and staff who, who participated. If you couldn't be there, I know you wanted to be there, but it was, it was a great event, and we'll see you there next year. It was the second annual, so I'm looking forward to the third annual one next year. Shout out to the foundation for their breakfast, which was a couple of weeks ago, it was a great event as well. Swatzen does a great job organizing, and I think if, one of the things that I heard a lot of positive feedback was just the centering of students. We had bands performing, we had students performing. It was all circled and centered around our students and our scholars, and it was just a great event and a great way to lift up what's going on and the positive things happening in our school district. So thank you to everybody who helped make that happen as well. Want to also lift up two of our schools. I see principal Dr. Williams is here from Schlegel. One of his student groups received a grant this past week from the Hispanic Development Fund, ANIMO, and they're doing a great job of doing some mentoring for students at Schlegel. They received a grant for that work, so thank you, Dr. Williams, for your support of that, that program and that work and that mentoring program. And you've got a lot of other great student-centered work happening over there. And then, Sumner also received a grant for their LSU, their Latino Student Union as well, for the work that they're doing there. So congratulations to those students on the work you're doing. We have a boundary committee coming up this week, this Thursday evening, so hopefully we'll have folks there ready to have conversations on our boundary committee, and then we'll bring back information to the board as well. And I think that's all I had for us today, so I'll open it up to any other board members who want to share. Ms. Russell?
I just wanted to say happy National Principals Month. I didn't mention it earlier to our three principals, but just immense amount of gratitude for all of the principals in KC KPS, and just appreciate your continued partnership and taking care of our scholars every day. There was something else I was going to say. I'm excited, and I hope board members will join me for the college fair next week, so we have the boundary meeting on Thursday, open to anyone who wants to attend the college fair on Thursday. I'm also going to Grandview High School, where they will have on display the 3D program. Everyone should have gotten an email about it. So excited to go see one of our former KC KPS principals building, but also excited to see our kids in action and have our district represented at that. So I think that's all for now, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And that college fair is on Tuesday from 10:00 to noon at Home Field, so hopefully, if you have a chance to come check that out, I know they work really hard. Ms. Martinez and the entire team organizing that does a great job, so hopefully you can make it out Tuesday, 10:00 to noon at Home Field. Ms. Clark?
Earlier today, we talked about the next sped advisory meeting. It is November 13th from 5:00 to 6:00 here at the central office in room 333. So again, that's November 13th. The other thing I will add is, it's really nice to see the amount of people that are celebrating a milestone graduation year, coming out to the games and celebrating and kind of reconnecting with the district. I've had several people come ask me questions, and then I've seen several celebrations online, so hopefully we can figure out a way to keep the momentum.
Ms. Clark? Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you. The finance committee met, and it should have been on this agenda, but it will hopefully be on, do we have the budget meeting on Friday?
Yes.
So we passed out the criteria that Mr. Carell developed from our, our input, and so we passed out, and we will recommend to the full board the criteria for the evaluation tool. The next finance committee will be on November 7th, virtually 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and that's that.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Brownlee Page?
Again, I just want to invite everyone to the academic meeting. It'll be on the 28th at 10:00. We're excited and hope that we can help in some kind of way. And I also attended Latino Heritage Program today, which I thought was excellent. They really did a good job. The speakers were phenomenal, and hopefully that will motivate. And it is important that children see themselves. It doesn't mean that other people don't care, but you need to see yourself, and that's important for your own self-esteem. So, and, and I would encourage us, for our Asian students, we didn't do anything last year, that we do do something for them, as well as the other international groups that are here, to let them know that we value them as much. I'm not saying we don't, and that no one cares, but if we're going to do it for a few, we need to do it for all. And, and the foundation breakfast was good as well. And it's good to have Arrowhead back open, and it seems like it's running pretty smoothly. I want to thank them for what they went through, how they endured, and we're survivors.
Give Ms. Brownlee Page. Yes, Ms. Clark?
I do want to call out our listening tour. We put a lot of time and effort into advertising, so I want to call out that we did have a listening tour on Monday for those that were able to make it out, and then we will announce the next one. I don't remember the, but whenever there's a next one, but I just want to encourage our, our community to come out and hear what is being said. There's always a lot of questions, a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of confusion, and it's just a really good time to truly understand what is truly happening, so I do want to call that out.
So I do want to call that out.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
I was just going to echo that both this tour and the last tour have focused on the financial components of the school district. The PowerPoint presentations are both available on the diligent website, our internal meeting website. So if folks weren't able to attend, you can go and look at that. I think there's the thought exchange is still open, so if people have additional questions or feedback there, that's an outlet to give that feedback. And then lastly, just looking at my calendar, I also want to shout out the Enough is Enough event that's happening on October 22nd, and make sure that if folks are able to stop by J.C. Harmon from 2:00 to 7:00, I believe, to make sure to do that. Say that one more time?
I thought it was 1:00 to 7:00.
I think it changed in the last hour. I don't know, not the last hour here, but on the last update, it said 2:00 to 7:00, I thought.
And the only thing I will add, there will be opportunities for vaccinations at that event, and we'll continue to share that information. I think I'm accurate on that.
Mr. Mylan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go on record to, I really enjoy, and I think the listening and learning session that we had eight days ago is very, very informative, and the facilitator did an excellent job in presenting the information as he presents it not only to us, but to the community. And my desire and hope and wish and prayer, whatever narrative you want to use, for more engagement from our community, because that's information that's given, questions that can be asked. It's a comforting environment that we can discuss, and it's much needed information that's given. I know, I'm a realist, I know that that night wasn't a great night maybe to have it because the Kansas City Chiefs were playing. I'm just for real, and I know that probably had something to do with the attendance. But saying all of that, when we have things of that, when we have, not things, when we have something of that nature, that's a part of what we're doing, I think we have it, what, three times a year or something like that. How we get it, the word out, the information out, when the information is needed to present to the community, because I get asked questions in the community in the vacation that I'm in, and and share that we do have an agenda like this set up, a platform, let me say that set up, where we can come and participate and ask questions, and we can know that he won't be, folks won't be fishing around and saying, well, we heard this and we didn't see that. So as we can do a better job with that, I don't know how, but there's always a way. My desire is for the listening session, which I feel is very important, to get the information out and to the community, so folks know you get the feedback. All right, that's that's all I have.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Yes, Dr. Nguyen?
I'd like to add that we used to have a lot more time for open mic, and I remember Ms. Russell participating, and I learned about a glow party. So you know how many years that was ago. But we need to have more time for open night mic and not so structured. And so I'm, I hope the next one, and we can make it known that, you know, it may be a complaint fest, but if if there are concerns, we need to be able to address them.
I don't disagree. It can be a complaint fest, but my-
But everything is not a complaint.
But I think there's positives.
It could be a concern, and it depends on what window you look at, how you're looking at it.
Well, we just haven't had the opportunity to have an open night. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, board. And I, Mr. Mylan, you just nodged something. I did also just want to say, congratulations to all the scholar athletes at Washington Football Team. Coach Cam is doing an amazing job. He's getting some recognition out there, doing a great job, again, not just coaching the young men in football, but also in 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 everything else off the field. So he's doing an amazing job over there. Hopefully folks have a chance to support not just Washington and Coach Cam doing some great things, but all of our coaches and scholar athletes doing some great work. So shout out to Mr. Simmons back here, leading our athletic department, and to all the coaches out there for the work that you do for our scholar athletes. But in particular this week, just wanted to give a shout out to Coach Cam out there. And then also just wanted to say congratulations and thank you to Dr. A Rodriguez today, who shared at the Latino Luncheon. And just reminding us of the work and the journey that we've been through our dual-language program, and just how critical it is for that support of that program. We started out a few years ago with just a couple of kindergarten classrooms. We're K through 2 right now, and that that program will continue to grow, and we've seen some amazing successes, and she reminded us of that story today. And I just appreciate that and her leadership in that work, because that is a highlight, something that we should lift up in this district. And I know we'll get more information in our translation interpretation program that we have for our scholars that are doing that work here as well. So thank you for sharing that today, and we'll continue to hear more. So just want to lift that up.
Did you say Dr. Rodriguez?
I said, doctora. Doctora Rodriguez.
Just making sure for those of us that speak English.
That's right. Yes.
Doctor.
All right. Thank you, board, as active as always. So now would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for attorney-client for matters, for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Dr. Pgram, Dr. Jones, Mr. Hansford for-
Doug and Miguel.
To include Doug and Miguel for seven minutes, for seven minutes, going in at 7:36.
Couldn't figure out, oh.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlon Jr.?
Marlon Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you.
It's that.[1028.88]
Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Clark. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Andy Yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. It's our motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of not-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Dr. Jones, Mr. Hansford.
That's it.
For 10 minutes going in at 7:49.
So long.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Andy Yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. To return to open session. Moved by Ms. Russell. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Andy Yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
All right. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Dr. Jones, Mr. Hansford for five minutes going in at 8:08. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by Ms. Clark, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session. Moved and set moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Jones, Mr. Hansford for 10 minutes going in at 8:16. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by Ms. Clark, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open session, please.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Mr. Goheen for 15 minutes. Going in at 8:41. Just Greg. This is the... And I'm sorry, Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones and Dr. Stubblefield, thank you. For 15 minutes going in at 8:41. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Mr. Goheen for 15 minutes. Going in at 8:41. Just Greg. This is the... And I'm sorry, Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones and Dr. Stubblefield, thank you. For 15 minutes going in at 8:41. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Mr. Goheen for 15 minutes. Going in at 8:41. Just Greg. This is the... And I'm sorry, Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones and Dr. Stubblefield, thank you. For 15 minutes going in at 8:41. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Mr. Goheen for 15 minutes. Going in at 8:41. Just Greg. This is the... And I'm sorry, Mr. Goheen and Dr. Jones and Dr. Stubblefield, thank you. For 15 minutes going in at 8:41. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Russell. Seconded by... Mr. Mylan, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Randy Lopez.
Yes, Randy Lopez.
Excuse me, Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
To return to open session, please.
Well moved.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Hey, everybody. Thank you for tonight. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great rest of your week.